Good evening, my name is Mason Magana and I would like to welcome you all tonight to the first of three of the Laramie County School District Number One Board of Trustees Candidate Forums hosted by the Cheyenne Teachers Education Association. A little bit about me, I've been a Spanish teacher in the district for eight years and I was elected to serve in the role of Member at Large Grade on the CTEA's executive. I volunteered to organize these forums with the school board candidates. You don't know who we are, the Cheyenne Teachers Education Association, also known as CTEA, is a professional organization that strives to improve public education and the lives of Laramie County students. Our members are teachers, counselors, social workers, librarians, coaches, nurses, and other cert events now. We are dedicated employees who work to deliver services to students throughout their schooling and advocate for positive public education policies. We also try to bridge the gap between educators, policymakers, and the members of the community. Building this bridge is the purpose of the forum tonight and why we are here. Now for some thank yous. First, thank you to the candidates for your interest in serving our community, for running for school board, and for taking the time to join us. Next, I would like to say thank you to the Wyoming Education Association, especially our communications director Amanda Turner, for your hard work and time to make sure that these forums are successful. I would also like to thank LCSD One for their continual support of our association and for allowing us the space to put on these forums, including the administrator, Mr. Bill Thompson, and the staff who helped to prepare the space for us. A huge thank you is to the moderators of this event who are putting out their key trial and homework, I'm sure, of over two hours just to be here and run the show for us. And finally, I would like to thank you, the community members, who showed up here to be involved in our community's success. Thank you. Here's some general information about this year's election. Four out of the seven seats of the Laramie County School Board are for election this November, and candidates have filed in different area races based on where they live, and residents of Laramie County will get to vote for one area candidate where you reside and one at-large candidate who will represent all triads. The forum tonight is going to host Area One and At-Large candidates. We will be hosting Area Two tomorrow night at East High School's performance, all from 6:00 to 7:30. And Area Three's forum will be held at Central High School Wednesday night, again from 6:00 to 7:30 in the town hall. At-large candidates that have been invited will be present at all three forums. Finally, let's talk about some events. Like I said, this forum is going to feature candidates in races for Area One and At-Large. We invited every candidate who filed for the Area One and At-Large races to participate in this event. We asked candidates to complete and submit a written questionnaire for a candidate by review sheet. We have QR codes posted at the entrance of the auditorium, on the back walls, as well as up here. They contain the information that the candidates chose to share with us. We generated the questions for tonight's forum by sharing a survey with students, teachers, staff, and parents with instructions to try to get it to spread further. This survey was administered during the last few weeks and it generated over eighty responses. We put these questions into unique clusters based on the area or the triad from which they came from. And we attempted to address as many of their community's concerns as we could by refining those eighty questions into just eight per term. Those are the questions that you will hear tonight for Area One. We ask that the audience hold a wall of applause for candidates until the end of the forum. And it is now my pleasure to introduce the moderators of this forum. Please give her end of applause for our South High School Student Council and Speech and Debate Students. I'm going to step aside now and allow the students to take over. Moderators, please introduce yourselves, state the rules for the forum, and begin with the questions. Thank you.
My name is Saluna Renez, I am a student here at South High School. I'm in twelfth grade and I participate in FBLA Student Senate in National Assembly.
Hi, my name is Sarah Vaynor and I'm a student here at South High School. I'm in twelfth grade and I participate in speech and debate, student senate, and then all AP honor roll students. We have the following rules and procedures and medical requirements. Candidates will begin with a ninety-second introduction of why they are running for school board. Candidates will have up to ninety seconds to answer this question. The timelines will be strictly adhered to. The moderator will call time at the end of the ninety seconds, and candidates are asked to stop their comment immediately. If you find that you are out of time or are caught off before you finish your point, jot it down because the last question of the night will give you minus sixty seconds to give any last remarks or finish making a point from earlier in the day. Questions will be posed to all candidates beginning with Area One and then At-Large in alphabetical order, and will then rotate so each candidate will respond first for different questions. Since this is a forum and not a debate, please avoid any personal attacks on the other candidates. Our first question is, please introduce yourself and explain why you're running for school board. The first candidate to answer will be Shelley Downcount.
Thank you, I appreciate your invitation to be here this evening. My name is Shelley Downcount and I'm running for school board because I'm an involved mother of three. I have two South High graduates and one current sophomore attending school here right now. My kids have attended the South Triad schools throughout their schooling. I was a very involved parent in which I was at PTO elementary level, at district level, parent advisory, I was involved with the teachers, coaches, and educators in the classroom, fundraising, and all kinds of everything you can think of at that level. And I was participatory all the way through as my kids have reached high school. As I was raising my kids, it was important to me that I understood what went on in their classrooms and what was going on in their lives, and that's why I became involved. As they continued on through school and told community members and visited, you know, my kids told them where they would be attending schools, there was always a face that was made after my children announced that they would be attending schools in the South Triad, namely Johnson and South. And that really bothered me, and so the opportunity to come, I was, had started a petition, a change.org petition, and recently visiting with Tim Bullard. He had the same idea, and so a couple of years after I did, which was to split so that it could be represented, and that's why I'm here today.
Next, alright, Joseph Ramirez, how you doing? I'm ready for the South Triad position because I ran into a deal of hate in 2018. Hasn't seemed to correct itself, and hate can exist in the halls of government, that's one of the reasons. I'm from Cheyenne, born and raised, been a twenty-five-year resident of South Cheyenne. My children, my adult children now, went to Cole, and two Goings, and then two Johnson and then Central because South wasn't built yet. But I'm a community organizer, a community activist, a community everything, basically. Again, born and raised here, I've looked at the situation in the South Triad. Actually, we got this voice back after twenty years' absence, so it's very important that we get in person that understands that philosophy and then be all thinking to give a group back after an absence voice. So my motto is "Representacion matters", "Reprecatacion importa", so I'm doing a bilingual campaign, and so I'm looking at a lot of things in this triad because I've been an active participant of the South Side of Cheyenne. Thank you. You ready to go?
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Hank Bailey. I'm a Wyoming native and was educated in the Cheyenne school system. My wife and I have eight children, seven of whom have been educated in this school district. We have twenty-three grandchildren, many of them currently attending school here. Three of my children are teachers in this school district. And I spent the last four years cheering the South Ice and Football Basketball Games as my son is the varsity basketball coach here, so I have an affection in my heart for this community and this school and this triad. I'm running, basically, for four reasons. The first is to make sure in our classrooms we have education and not indoctrination. The second part of my platform is to respect the rights and role of parents in the education of their children. The third is to ensure that resources get to the classroom where education takes place. And then the fourth is to ensure that we have a school environment where students are safe and can flourish as they pursue their dreams. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Randy Hinkle. And I am running for the At-Large position for Laramie County School Board. I'm an OB-GYN physician here in town. I served eleven years in the US Navy. I've lived and worked in Cheyenne for twenty-four years and have delivered thousands of babies in this field. I raised two daughters, who both went to the Cheyenne school system and graduated from Cheyenne's public schools. And I'm passionate about high-quality public education. One of the main reasons that we moved here when I started having a family was because of the strong public school system in Cheyenne. I grew up in Florida, and all the school systems were not as good as here, and that was a big draw. Without high-quality schools, community cannot flourish. And so I've served on many boards in Cheyenne, and I feel that I bring the experience of board governance to this position, which is an important part of being a board, a school board. And I'm running for school board because over the past two years, I have seen that the focus of the board has been distracted by national political issues. I would like to turn the focus of the board back to its main purpose, which is high-quality education for all students. I want to get politics out of the boardroom and out of the classroom. I believe that every student in the district deserves a quality education equal to everyone else.
Thank you for having me, thanks for playing this on. And Hinkle, speech and debate kids, I was a speech and mediator, so I'm always happy to see. I can do everything we all love to. My name is Jennifer Pasqua and I'm running for the At-Large seat. Another reason why I'm running is I have a son that attends East High School, who's in ninth grade. And I've seen some things in our community that I'm not real happy with as an educator. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that one of the guiding factors in getting me to do this was the things that were happening at the school board meetings the last couple of years, in particular, national politics, voting, hate, things like that being spotlighted. And as an educator, I also really support my fellow educators. And so currently, I'm a teacher, I teach fourth, fifth, and sixth grade special education students in Everens Elementary. I was a teacher here in the district for many years. And I support educators, I support teachers, I support the voice of students, and that's really the only reason I'm running.
Thank you so much for doing this and for running. My name is Meg Roroni, don't be afraid of me, just say "Megan". The reason I'm running is I'm a parent. I have two kids in Central High School, but they moved to the east side, so I care about all the triads. The reason I'm running is similar to Jennifer Pasqua is that I went to some of the school board meetings and some of the things that I saw there really frightened me. I believe that education, education is all about new ideas and learning new cultures. It's also about history, recognizing the ugliness that happened and addressing it and bringing it to the forefront so we can fix it for the future. I believe in accessibility, I want my public libraries and my school libraries to be open, available to all kids, and I believe also equality. We are the equality state, and I believe that everyone, no matter what, their race, their gender, their socioeconomic status, their sexual orientation, their disabilities, or their religion, deserves a quality education. I will work with a team of people, I can't make decisions all by myself because that's what the school board is, it's a group. We're all supposed to be working together, parents, teachers, educators, and educators. We all need to work together to make a better system for our kids and our education. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start with our second question. We're gonna start with Joe Ramirez. How will you engage your community to improve public schools in the district and our triad? What is your vision for education in the community? How does this support the economy and the quality of life in the community?
Well, thank you. One of my points in my flyer is social, emotional, and academic learning, that you have to have a safe environment for that. We have low total test scores, we know that, but we also have low entry scores, which means serving under certain students in the South Triad, they're very low. We also have high percentages of students of color, specifically Latino or Hispanic, whatever you want to call it, whatever designation you want, it's a high percentage. So we've gotta engage the Spanish student community. We have to be able to figure out how to do that along with the Anglo community and the other communities of color, so we can figure out how to economically and educationally and socially, like I said, academically, make this a better triad for all the students in this district and in this triad. So how would I support that? I would get with the business owners and small business owners economically, equality of life. One of the things that Dr. Crespo just approved of was the health works. It's gonna work with the South Triad schools and provide not only physical health, but mental health for the students, the educators, and others in this area. So that would be one of the ways I would continue to work with Dr. Crespo and her ideas and look at the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would work to improve public schools in the district, basically the way we did it when I was on the board previously, as I was on Board of Trustees. My last job on the board was as chairman of the board. We were very open to the public coming to our meetings, providing input to us. People knew that if they had an issue, whether it was a teacher or a parent, they could call me and talk to me. But it's important to remember that the board sets policy and it hires administrators to run the district. It's the responsibility of those districts or those administrators on a day-to-day basis to make sure our schools are doing what they need to do to educate our children and prepare them for the future. So one of the things I would do is to make sure we continue to have an open board policy, listening to people, I would make sure that we have the right administrators in positions that will do the job that needs to be done to improve education. My vision for education in the community is math, science, history, English, the fine arts, computers, and making sure we have high-quality education in those areas. I think one of the things that I've seen with the South Triad in particular is, even though we have boundary areas where students are supposed to go to school, they're not enforced very well. We have a lot of students who transfer to east or central. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the ways that I've talked with several people about trying to engage the community more since our public meetings that the board has are not great ways for there to be dual communication from the community and to the community is to do some town halls in each of the districts where smaller numbers of us are present that can interact and actually answer questions and things like that directly. Another way in discussion through the Chamber of Commerce in the city is doing some internships, scheduling local businesses to set up internship opportunities so that people can go out and see what different careers work like, whether that's careers in things like inking, or insurance, or real estate, or in construction, and all the different areas in between. So trying to get actual hands-on experience is another way to do that. And then trying to work a little bit more without CCC to get more programs for technical training and things like that for other types of careers, and partnering with them in many different ways to get the community involved that way.
She stole my thunder, a couple of things, so I'll just fly over you a couple of things that she said. One of the things that I think we don't take very much of any of that is the relationship of CCC, and I think I know a couple of people. So I could encourage them to get out and help in the community a little bit more, and vice versa, encourage students to go attend sessions on whatever they're interested in. I think, as we all know, if you're here and if you're up here, we all know that there's a real push to go to college, but it doesn't have to be that way. And I think that we, as talking to other people in the community, we can do more things that are more workforce-related versus just only focusing on college. And as an educator, I think that's my job as well, because I know that I have been part of the "go to college, go to college", and I need to support the other side of that too, so just changing our mind frame and focusing on getting the workforce going in our community. The other thing that I would say is that we don't often intend to look at things as a long-term goal. And so the educating of our students is part of the economy. So focusing on good schools, funding schools adequately, and making sure that students have what they need now will then give back to us in the community once they're early citizens. So that's just, those are a couple of things that I think I would like to see happen.
After being at a school board meeting, I think the most important thing, there's a couple of things. School board meetings need to be a little more accessible. There was a few times where it was really hard for people to make comments in their website. It was when they wanted to structure how people made comments about policy and things of that. Their website was a little rough, so I think I would approve the website. And that's how we can get more easily interaction with the community. And I like the idea of having town halls, because again, if you can come and speak to us directly and email us and call us, that's the best way to interact with the community. Big settings may not work as well. My vision for education in the community is quality. Quality educators, quality education connecting with the local community college. I was approached by the Chamber of Commerce to see if they wanted to do internships, and I was all for internships as long as they were paid. A lot of people will say, "Well, let's get free labor", and that's all very wonderful for experience, but experience doesn't pay the bills. So I'd like the kids to have, you know, a small segment to get them to be able to pay the bills. We all have cell phones, right? And that should improve the quality of life in the community.
Okay, thank you. So I'm running for the South Side Triad, and I'm not going to apologize for having most of my answers have a South Side playing to it. I am gonna answer that question in the fact that how will we engage the community and improve public schools and it within our triad? I think that there needs to be respect brought to the board at the district level for the South Triad particularly. I think that no one, as Joseph said, since this school has been opened, no one has had any historical ties to the school. Nobody at the district has ever had the opportunity to have children go through the district. We have, we need to have administrators, and we need to have parents, and we need to have a voice for our triad to be treated the same as the other triads in this district. The next thing is I want to be able to offer a voice that provides understanding of South Side parents. Being a parent of a South Side person is completely different than being a parent from an east triad or a central triad, and that's why it was important that the school board adopt this new way of how the board is made up so that we can have actual representation of those people sitting on our board. My vision for schools, as the schools and especially our triad, is to have a healthy culture. We need to have a healthier culture based on the fact that we can't lump some, one of the full Title I schools or anything into one area. We need to have a healthier culture spread throughout our district in that way.
Moving on to our third question. What would you implement to ensure that educators are supported by the school board, community, and administrators? What would you do to chase away the community's negative perceptions of educators? And Henry, can you give a quick example?
Well, I hope the community does not have a negative perception of educators. The vast majority of our teachers and educators in this district are outstanding people. I have three with my own family, and so I have a passionate regard for teachers. One of the things that I would like to do is take a close look at is how many, how much stuff we have placed on the platters of teachers in the classroom, how many assessments they have to do. I'll never forget talking to an administrator when I was on the board previously about how much time we spend each year preparing to take tests as opposed to just teaching their subjects. I think a lot less political, coming down from legislatures, and the need to have certain results before you get funding and so forth. But I think teachers have way too much on their platter right now. When I was on the board previously, I led the charge to try to cut the size of central administration in this district. I think one of my platform points is to put resources in the classroom where education takes place, and what I mean by that is to make sure our teachers are paid and have the benefits they deserve for the noble work that they do. And so I hope the community doesn't have a negative perception of teachers. But like any profession, my profession is certainly one of them, the legal profession. Not everybody's the same.
Well, I think that, I think everyone running, I think, would tell you that we definitely need to try to keep our educators paid as well as we can. I'm sure most of you know that we have not gotten a substantial increase in the budget for the district in almost ten years. It hasn't even met the three percent rule for routine inflation, you know, when inflation's done this year. So I do think we need to make sure that we are speaking to legislators and trying to make sure they understand that education is one of the most important parts of the communities in Wyoming, and it is a constitutional rule that they fund it appropriately. So I think we just need to make sure that we're letting the legislators know that we're expecting that. As far as community's perception, I think it's a small portion of the community that does not agree with the way teachers are teaching or the things that they're being taught. And I think we just need to lift the teachers up. I think we do have students on the week, and maybe we should also be teachers on the week so that we can spotlight teachers on a regular basis for doing, going above and beyond, which the vast majority of our teachers do go above and beyond. So I think we just need to recognize that.
So it makes me really happy to hear that other people don't feel like teachers are having a negative perception. I, as a teacher, do. I can tell you that COVID was awful, as we all know, but as an educator, it was about, you know, a whole lot more weight put on my shoulders as a teacher to make sure I was meeting the needs of students, make sure I was meeting the needs of myself, make sure all those things happened. So I would say that I think as a teacher, you just feel like nothing is ever good enough. And that's just currently how I feel as an educator. And when is enough gonna be enough? That's my personal feeling. What I would say is that what I think we need to have more of is we need to have more positive information out into the community about teachers and what's going on in the classroom, and not just at a school board meeting, not just at the school paper that goes out, you know, the district paper that goes out once, once every six months. So we need to figure out, and that could be something the board figures out, but working with the community to figure out how many of those perceptions are positive. And also, you know what, we need to listen to students.
you know what, we need to listen to students, because I know that probably everybody up here has a story about the teacher that they remember the most. And I still talk to a lot of my teachers that I had and speak to the day coach, the drama teachers. So I think that we need to hear the positive experiences from students about their teachers.
I love my teachers. I love the ones that I taught me, I love the ones that I interacted with with my kids. And so I would always be pro-teacher. I always have been and I always will be. I guess as my job invoked me on to the school board, it would be to encourage people to see teachers as the professionals and the experts they are. We have stated on standards that all the teachers have to teach the curriculum, but I think a lot of people say, well, they have to teach it a certain way. And I would argue that they do not. I would argue that we should give them their creativity to get, to reach as many students as possible, because not everybody learns the same. I think we need to come together as a community in general, parents, administrators, and the legislature needs to really understand just the value that we have in teachers, because education wouldn't happen without teachers. The pandemic showed me that I am not a teacher. I am excellent in many things, but I am not a teacher. And that's why we have these professionals that do this job, because it is a job that takes skill. And we need to honor that. So I think part of the encouragement and saying, look, these teachers, these people are amazing and they get your kids to learn. And that's really important.
Okay, so anyone that I feel has a negative perception of teachers isn't as involved as they maybe should be. I believe that when you come right down to it and you talk to teachers and you're involved in their lives and in your children's life, that you understand that they're really doing the best with what they have. I believe that in order for the teachers to feel supported, I feel like that they need to feel like they have a valid voice and that will be heard at the board level. I think that board members need to be more visible, they need to be more accessible. And I think that having the triad area representation may help with that as well, because it's an opportunity for someone to feel that, a teacher specifically, that the person that is on the board understands that there are problems unique to their triad. I also feel that there hasn't been enough representation on our board at the state level. I would like to be able to petition and work at the state level a little more. We are the largest district in Wyoming, and that, that says something. We have the most kids, we have the most diversity, we have the most issues technically, and technically the least amount of resources. So I would like to be able to work with those at the state level as well as part of on behalf of L C S D one.
All right, next. When did teachers become the bad guys? I don't understand that. That's one of the reasons I'm on the streets as well. My boys went, my daughters went to leave South Triad schools. I have nephews recently who went to the Sun Valley School areas for the South Triads also. And I've always seen some excellent teachers in all those. I'm volunteering, I go into Hebert during the summer or during the school year. And I can recognize some hardworking individuals that are doing the best that they can with what they have. So we've got to start making them the bad guys first place. And guess what game changer? Nobody mentioned this. Larynx has School District joined, W B A in the lawsuit, which has direct connection to teacher salaries and other salaries at the professional level. So that goes through, we get it approved, governor has to pull you up some money, state legislature has to pull you up some money to provide more than that, but education for all students in the state of Wyoming and Larynx and the School District number one. So that's the big thing, guys. We've got to hope that that goes through and we win that suit. Because we just joined it recently. We're the largest school district in the state. Casper could argue with this, but we are. And so that's how you improve. Community improves, South Triad has, has had a, well, Southside has a negative that's happening. So we have to flip, we have to flip that one. We have to flip that negative issue. Thank you.
Moving on to the fourth question. There have been many words about removing the district's hate speech policy. How do you plan on addressing this policy so specific groups of students are protected from derogatory speech and feel safe in school?
Thank you. I, I do not agree with hate speech being taken out of disciplinary policy. I think given our current political situation in the nation and in Wyoming, and the betrayal that has come through recently, that we definitely need to keep hate speech as part of the disciplinary policy and make sure that everyone in the school district, students, teachers, administrators, from the top to the bottom, know that hate speech is not acceptable and that we need to eliminate it from all schools. Everyone should feel safe and protected and not bullied on either there in one of our schools or at one of our activities. And so I definitely think that needs to be a huge priority we have. Also, as part of the strategic plan that Mr. Crespo approved and the board approved recently, inclusion and diversity are a large part of that plan. And so we need to follow that plan. They've started things like sources of strength, which is supposed to help with emotional and learning as well as decreasing bullying and helping emotional attitudes.
Thank you. That was perfect timing. That's what I said earlier. I also disagree with the movement of district's hate speech policy. There's a couple of things. There's a difference between hate speech and active freedom and freedom of speech. So I think that that needs to be recognized and implemented a little bit more than it is. But the big thing is when it happens, we need to support administrators, we need to support teachers. And that doesn't need to be pushed under the rug or, you know, pushed aside or hush, hush and not talk about it. Because that's the way we learn. We learn about what happens. We need to know those things. And so I feel like we need to have, there's one thing to have a policy in place, and then there's another thing to abide and model what you, what the policy says. And so what I would really like to see is more support for educators and allow them to feel more empowered to do something about what's happening at school. Because these things are happening. Just walk down any hallway in any of our high schools, like we don't want to pretend, I don't want to pretend like it's not happening, because it is. And so the first thing we need to do is recognize that it's happening. And the second thing we need to do is support educators and administrators to do what they need to do.
I support keeping the district's hate speech policy, because if we ignore it, then we'll have the same problems we had in the former district. And the bullying will continue. My kids are bullied. And we found a way around it, but district didn't know about it. And that's mine. I would definitely champion the, keeping the hate speech policy in place. I would champion also stepping up and actually implementing it and holding people accountable. We let bullying go for too long. And a lot of people, we all have stories of bullying. Everyone does. We have it in high schools, we have it in adults. So obviously, something needs to change. And we do need to support our teachers and our administration and administrators with it. But we also need to make a concentrated effort to make sure we root it out, stand up against it, and not put it under the rug. And not fight the teachers that come and tell us the problems that are happening in school. That's another thing we need to really step up to. So, I'm getting lost in here. No, I think that's all I'm saying.
First of all, I'd like to start by asking, to asking anyone to raise their, I guess you don't have to, but think about raising your hand if you've been a recipient of hate speech or derogatory remarks, or have heard it in the district as well. I'll raise my hand. I have done both. If you feel comfortable, go ahead and raise your hand, because I know that that is prevalent here and especially in the South Triad. I think that every single person that's attended our schools have, here have been recipients of it from the other triads from across the state. We have a reputation, obviously, that precedes us that needs to stop. And I think that we, I have been at athletic events, I've been in other activities where I've heard it myself. I've heard kids yelling towards other kids. And, you know, it's, it's got to stop. I want us to make that stop. And so obviously, I'm in support of having some sort of policy on the board. And again, the board has the policies that we need to be able to have a healthy environment, is how they are either held accountable for or how they are either ignored at a certain degree or, and that's why it's so important to have a good South Triad person on there, because they can think, oh, it doesn't happen to my kids or I've never had experience with that or anything, you know, whatever. But we have and we know, and we know what it's like. And it's important to have that represented.
All right, hate speech unfortunately is protected by the First Amendment. So there's really nothing we can do about that. But we could do something about the actions around hate. Being a recipient of hate is quite different than being a recipient of harassment or intimidation. I wear glasses, I've been called forest, but I'm also a little bit on folks. So I've been called on the show names. So what do we do about it in schools? We do have policies, I've seen the district policies, but it doesn't appear that they're really enforced in an effective manner. So we've got to fix that. But how do you do it within school? At L C S C, I created something called the Cross-Cultures Club, and which was a student club. With people first, we're going to create a students-first student club for folks with disability. That's two of the ways. One of the other ways is Council on Student Diversity. So you begin looking at issues at a school-wide level and seeing how we can address that. And I would be part of that as a trustee to help the school understand and cope with that scenario of how we can create a hateful environment in all schools. And also, constantly, how we can address that without hating that. Thank you.
Before we start, I think we need to switch the name tags here. Because I know this isn't Sheldon.
No, this isn't.
Sheldon, already.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure you got credit.
Well, I hate to keep going back, but I will. I was on the board previously. We actually have meetings in the community that need to deal with the subject of bullying. It was a problem back then. I think it's always going to be a problem. Frankly, there are bullies. And unfortunately, everything we do or try to eradicate that probably will not ultimately get us what we want to get. Doesn't mean it can't try, or shouldn't try. I, however, am concerned, I don't know what this policy says, so I'm really not going to address the policy itself or whether it should be kept or changed or removed, because I don't know what it says. But I can tend to tell you generally, I am very concerned about restrictions on people's speech, their thought, and those kinds of things I think are protected to a degree by the Constitution. Although in the school system, there are limitations to that, actually, constitutionally. But my concern is how the policy is implemented, how it's used. I can envision perhaps a situation where somebody claims somebody used his speech. And then how do you prove that didn't take place? So I'm a little concerned when we start regulating speech and thought. But I do agree with your conduct can be regulated and should be.
Okay, we're going to start with our fifth question, and we're going to start with Jennifer Caswell. With Southland's triad community being separated, how would you support and help students represent their culture through school and community?
So the easiest answer to this question honestly is to talk about it and allow students to talk about it and read about it and share it. And I'm, I'm not naive because I teach elementary. I also taught high school for a few years too. So I know that elementary students are often more willing to, you know, let everybody know about their culture and share their stories. But we need to make high school students feel that way too. The easiest answer, for, of course, I'm an educator and a teacher, so the easiest answer for me is through what we read in the classroom. And there's so many connections that students can make to literature. And so this other question coming up about being a ghost, I'm kind of giving away my answer in the last thing. But the easiest thing for me to do is talk to kids when we read something and have them share and invite people in to share their story. If, if they want their family to come in and their families comfortable sharing their experience, why wouldn't you want that? Why wouldn't you want to share that with everyone that you spend, you know, nine hundred hours of the year with, you know? So I guess I, I don't need to like, oh, you know, this is so sugar-coated. But honestly, we haven't been doing that. And where we are.
In Southland's triad, the community being diverse, I would encourage the students to talk to us. I would encourage the community to talk to us. I'm representing at large, so I would rather hear from the community itself to find out how they would improve it. Because I can implement, and I work with a team of the entire board to implement ways of encouraging the students to represent their culture. And the biggest thing is people, listen to people. Have them come and talk to us, have the students be able to present, read, read books and things that allow the cultures to be shared. Because I think we get too narrow-minded and we forget that there's more than just one culture. Joe would help me standard for this too. But it's really important to be, that we don't live in a monochromatic world. There are too many people and there are too many cultures and it's worth listening to, because we don't know everything. And the only way to do that is to hear from members of the community. So I would encourage the students to tell their stories and make it safe for both the educators and the students to do so in the culture of schools.
Let me first start off by saying that as a South Triad, we know we are diverse. We celebrate the diverseness and we understand that each children, each child in the school district and each child in our South Triad comes from a different background. We are not blind to the fact that we have the lump sum of Title I schools in our triad. We are not blind to the fact that our families need more support than some of the others. And we recognize that and we work on it. And that actually makes us one of our strengths. One of the things, and it's also one of the things that is a downfall to us, because the rest of the town says, oh, we don't want our kids to go to this same school that is so diverse. Why? Why do we not want our kids to have more experiences, have their eyes open to other ways that people think, the ways that other people live? And so I feel that South has done a fantastic job of helping kids celebrate who they are, because they are the underserved or the marginalized community to begin with. This makes me super proud to be part of the South Triad. And when I mention South, I don't know, we always mention just South High, it means Southside, all the schools and the boundary which the district has dictated. I'm proud of that. I'm proud of that diversity. And I'm glad that I've raised my children in order to not see skin color or to see anything else about somebody except for who they are.
Wow, it is diverse, folks. South High, Johnson Junior High, over 40% students of color. students of color. The other schools in the South Triad, and the historic South Side, and the rest of the South Side, Johnson Junior High, going, it's over forty percent. Sun Valley, which is the four schools, Vane, Sunrise, Napa, and Fairview, over thirty percent students of color. So we do have a radically diverse culture in our schools, and we have to understand it. Most of those are Latino families, are Spanish speakers, so we have translators in schools. And that's not a good prescription for learning, folks, so we've got to fix that. So we want translators in schools in the South Triad to help out the community of students that we have there that need that help. But also, besides the diversity of color, we have students from the LGBT community, students from the disability world, and also our assistance in becoming good students and good community members, and proud of this community and the South Triad, and being represented and proud of it. Thank you.
Well, I think the most important thing that we can do as a board to support the South Triad community is to make sure we have the very best educational opportunities we can have for our young people in the schools, that what they're being taught will help them succeed now and in the future. That may mean education involving something that takes them into the university world, college, higher education. It may mean going to work soon after graduation. I'm a strong believer in the trades being taught in our schools at every high school. I took them when I was in high school. I think it's good for everybody to do that. Not everybody is going to go to Yale. Not everybody's going to be a physician like Dr. Ankle. There's so many ways students can contribute now and in the future. If we give them quality education, they need the tools that they need to succeed. So I think the best thing we can do for the community is make sure they have excellent teachers, adequate facilities, and adequate resources, like everybody else has, so they're able to compete. And one of the things that's been frustrating to me over the past four years, because my son was involved in athletics at this school, is to see how many students don't go to South High School. They choose to go to East or Central, and they're allowed to do that because of certain rules being enforced.
Thank you. Yes, South area is more diverse than the rest of the community, and I really do believe that the board should celebrate that. I agree. I think we should probably take more time to spotlight different community events that have been in this area that show diversity and celebrate it, and make it be part of a better Cheyenne, because we are not diverse in many of the other areas in Cheyenne. Luckily, this district has approved a new strategic policy, which again is very strong in diversity and inclusion. I agree with Joe Ramirez, when he says that we need to celebrate not just the different ethnic people that are in South Cheyenne, but also the LGBTQ community, as well as other different, other people who are different than us. We need to celebrate those differences and not try and stay away from them. And that's part of what the strategic plan is hoping to do, is to help us feel more included and not excluded.
So moving on to our sixth question. What is your stance on banning books or limiting students' access to books in the school library? You want to start with me?
I'm pro book. All books, any books, read books, read lots of books, more books, go to libraries and more books. There's a really good policy already in place with LCSD, the school district, that is called the Opt-Out program. And that means it gives all the rights to parents to opt out of things that they feel are inappropriate. However, I really believe in trusting librarians, trusting teachers, to know what's best for your kids to read. But if you do have a problem, you have the opportunity to opt out, to say, "No, I'm not okay with my kids reading this," which gives you all the rights and all the responsibility. It's the school board's responsibility to make sure all books and all education is accessible. It's not our job to police what you read. However, if you feel that your kids are reading something that you don't like, that's what this policy is for, and it's excellent. Me, I want my kids to read everything. I had an advisor in graduate school that said, "Read everything, know everything." I shouldn't be in that, because if they read everything, and they have questions, they can always come to talk to me. They can always come and talk to their teachers. It's really important that everyone gets a chance to read anything they want. Is it scary? Yep. But that's what we're here for. We're parents, and we need to address that when we come in. Thank you.
I support the board's opt-out policy as well. As a parent, I was able to do that with my kids long before the board even adopted such a policy. I think it's important that they have ability to have access to what they need. What I think is good for my children may not be the same for what you think is good for your children. And the question of having, you know, sexually explicit books and things like that in our libraries, I'm not sure why we're screaming so much about having that when we have the internet and TV and movies, and when we also have the option to just go down to the public library and get whatever it is that you need. I don't see anyone having a fit over the public library at this time. The school board has also put into place a great website that is free for parents, and that is called Destiny Website. And they're able to go curate a list of the topics and the options that they would like their children to be a part of. I highly encourage parents, and as I was able to do, form relationships with the librarians. They are highly trained. They have nothing less than a master's degree in what they're doing and in the book selections. Again, what's good for me and what I may or may not like is not the same. The way I parent my child is not the same. We need to be able to also allow kids who have struggles to be able to find information that meets with what they are struggling with, whether they feel like they can ask a parent or not.
Wow, again, folks. I've been a reader since fifth grade. I'm a old guy. So I've been reading books a long time. And this, I cannot understand. How do you ban books? How do you ban knowledge? How do you ban information? But there's a group, and one of my opponents agrees with that group, that wants to ban the books, and wants to limit access to library information for students. Back in my day, it was called my mom that looked at what books I read and stuff. And it was all students, but most of the time it was my mom who knew what I was doing. So I think it's in the parents' control. And the opt-out policy is a good policy. I love that, folks. It's got lots of safeguards on it. I do not understand this, and it's been around forever, guys. Again, it just didn't come about. It's been around forever. So as I've been writing, as a candidate or a trustee, I've been looking at all kinds of different sort of things. And the opt-out policy appears to be pretty decent. And so I agree with it. Let it stay. Maybe we have to redo it sometime, but it's been in place for, I think, to follow the version of us. So again, opt-out. There's the control. Parents have the control. Students have the control. Community has the control. Somebody else to control that control. Thank you.
Well, I'm in the video. I'm all in this group on this one. I'm not in favor of banning books, and nobody's arguing for that. As Shelley correctly stated, parents can get any book they want from their children in the public library. They can access any material remote online. But I think it's inappropriate to have pornographic materials, anything that sexualizes our children at inappropriate ages. I spent the last nine and a half years as the state president of the Cheyenne Learning State, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Holy Saints. I've been responsible for the temporal and the spiritual welfare for thousands of people in this community that we've been torrenting, and I have seen so many young people, especially addicted to pornography. And I've seen older people addicted to it that's ruined their families and ruined their lives. And to give that material, put it into a public school library, I can't see the justification for it at all. And furthermore, one of my colleagues, Susan Edgerton, has said, I think the most intelligent comment about that, which is that, "Why do we have taxpayer dollars paying for books that probably don't do anything to increase proficiency?" So I'm not in favor of opt-out, because I don't think parents sometimes are aware of what's in those libraries. My daughter, she certainly was, and brought someone to my attention. So I will very carefully read this policy if I would like to the board.
I do not think we should remove books from the library. We have fabulous teachers, wonderful librarians, who do a fabulous job selecting our books. They choose award-winning books. They choose books that have ideas that the kids want to read about, that make them want to read, and that's what we want. We need to trust their work. They are the experts. And they know. We do not have pornography in our schools. We have books that discuss appropriately sex education. We don't have a very strong sex education in this community. And kids need to get information. If they get true and honest information that is factual, I think that is super important. Many times, they're not getting it at home. We need to make sure they have access to that. We have a policy that works, and we need to rely on it. We need to keep the opt-out policy in place. All parents should be able to make those decisions for their kids. But it shouldn't be up to a certain number of parents, a small number of parents, to make those decisions for all kids. If you look at the books that they're wanting to get rid of, only nine percent of them have white, male, and gay characters. So that means over ninety percent of the books they want to get rid of have people that look like diverse people, or people of color, women, LGBTQ. So really think about that. So we need to keep the books in the library.
So I would just like to say that I would give anything for my son to read, my fourteen-year-old son, and I beg him to read. So that's what I would like to point out. I love the author Jason Reynolds, and everything he writes I gave to my son. So obviously, I'm not for giving books of any kind. In a sense, I want to rephrase, because something, there's misconception in over-sexualized books, as I mentioned, are not available cases. So that needs to be clarified. So these books are not available to younger students. So that's important to mention. The other thing that really has me bothered is, I'm sorry, I've been a little fired up about this, because I take this really personally, because I love to read. I was also a special education English teacher at high school level, and I've heard about a lot of authors and a lot of other subjects, because I didn't know before. And I'm old, right? And I'm a lot older than some of you. So what I would say is that we really need to listen to students, and what's important to them, which we often miss, their voices very forgotten, out of the way. But the other thing we're missing in this situation is how do things used to be handled, and how should they be handled, which is between the teacher, and the parent, and the student. And so, when you do something like this, you're completely removing that relationship, or that opportunity for a relationship.
Because of time, we're going to skip down to question nine, and we'll start with Shelley Downheart. What do you think the most prominent issues within the South Triads community are, and how do you plan to address them?
Thanks. I'm going to also refer to question eight on that, because I feel like one of the prominent issues with the South community is the boundary waivers. I think that we need to do a better job of keeping our kids at our schools and breaking the mentality of the South Cheyenne community. I feel like that, you know, Inc. has mentioned a couple of times about boundaries, the waivers, and that that's a direct result for Cheyenne, South High, and the South Side communities, and the fact that their athletic teams struggle, their academics may seem to struggle because we're allowing those children to move out of there. One of the things as well that I feel is prominent is, so actually, that's what I want to address the most when I get onto the board of you are voted for, I voted in, is that I want to be able to express to the district how bad those are. One of my friends just was recently speaking with a current trustee who had no idea that forty-three kids had transferred out in one year from South High. And she said, "No, that's not how the district works." And we said, "Yes, it is. That's how the district is working." We need to do a better job. We need to make it available for, if you need to go for academic purposes, or whatever, stay at home and do activities at your home school. There's lots of opportunities in which we can build this triad and build this community.
All right. Question, are we doing question seven or question eight?
No.
Okay.
It's not like this. Let me say nine. It's not.
So was it both questions?
I answered both eight and nine, so that's all right.
So, hey.
I'm sorry, first.
Who's after it? Anyway, waiver problems. I went to St. Mary's, guys. I'm an old guy, and so the waiver problems were a source of issues with Central East. We had a lot of students leaving St. Mary's, they'd go by the mall, and do everything else in Central East. So it's an issue. It's an issue. We've got to celebrate who we have here at both the South and Johnson Junior High, and somehow we can celebrate these. I don't know. I used to wear leather jackets. I'm like, "Oh, big deal, leather jacket." But also, we belong to the Pet Club. So we both agenda here, me and my friend. So they had a little vest made for us and celebrated with the young ladies from Pet Club. So what do you want to do? Extra current activities, sports? We've got here. So students duly, let's figure out a way for them to stay. So we're going to have three triads. That's the one, East. So the Central East and the South Triad. So we've got to work together and figure this out, and see what's best, and see what's acceptable. And if we can, then we've just got to keep the other guys close, guys. I'm sorry. Thanks.
So which question are we on?
Nine.
Eight?
Nine.
It's nine? I thought it was...
I screwed you all up, because I kind of did eight and nine together. Sorry.
Well, for me, eight and nine are kind of the same. And I'll tell you, just because of what Shelley said, I have witnessed this over the past four years. How many students have left this community, they live in this community, but they will get one of those waivers where they can go to Central or East, usually for athletics. And it's been very detrimental to South High School. There have been occasions over the past few years where South High School could have had perhaps the best basketball team in the state, but for a couple of transfers that went to Central High School. I have nothing against Central High School or East, but it's how we enforce these rules. And I think that's a big reason why this school hasn't flourished like it could have. My partner, Ronnie Lopez, lives in this district. His children, his oldest boy now goes to South. But he said when he was in junior high, all of his, well, maybe not all of them, most of his transfer football team were either going to Central or East. That starts adding up over the years, and it's figured out now. So then beyond that, just making sure we have excellent teachers in the classroom, providing quality education opportunities for the students here, the same is throughout the district, which I think we are, because my experience has been there's just some great teachers in South High School.
Thank you. I'll kind of link them together as well. I have to agree with all the other folks up here so far in that the waiver system probably is one of the biggest detriments to South High School. And trying to make sure that any waivers that are done throughout the district are done equally fairly, and that there is not any kind of extra given to people who are trying to leave South High School. I don't think I really should be the only reason to go to East. And if somebody does go to East for Ivy, then I make sure that they're doing the Ivy program, and they're not there just taking one Ivy class and then doing sports. So we just need to make sure it's equitable. I think one of the other problems is that even though South High School is a beautiful building, and there are same opportunities here as far as classes and technical things, that they can use the computers and all. that they can use, the computers and all those types of things, many of the other schools in this district, many of the elementary schools especially, are not equal to the other schools in the other parts of the district. So we need to make sure that every student has the same opportunity to the same education, the same IT opportunities, to the same teacher opportunities. And so we need to make sure all the schools are equal as far as their physical building, as well as their technical abilities. We show a bunch of politicians the questions and tell us we can't answer them, which I have them all together. That's, I'm going to put a little answer there for question eight as well. The first thing I'd like to say is that I taught at the South, excuse me, the Central Triad School for over eight years in elementary, and then I taught for a few years at the Southside School in elementary. And they both have amazing teachers. What I can tell you is the community perception. So when it says, what do you think the most prominent issue is, is the perception and some of the things that I heard on the other side and what I hear as my son attends the East Triad School, the East High School, not just for students, okay? So some of the comments I've heard came from parents, and, you know, like, I just want to, you know, sit them down and tell them what's going on. But the next thing I would say is, with the waivers that have been brought up, I would like us to stop calling in waivers and just call it what it is, which is school of choice, because that's exactly the detriment that has happened with the waivers, is exactly what happens when you improve the school of choice, which means one school suffers or a group of schools suffer because everyone chooses to go elsewhere. So I would like to see the waiver system go away, quite frankly, and that might show a lot of support for a community that we believe in all schools, no matter where they are.
I'm ready to go on, thank you. So, so I, as a parent that moved, had started a kid in Central High School because we lived over there and then moved to the East Side, I didn't want to drag my kid out, so that's for the waiver's benefit. However, when the oldest kid graduates, the youngest kid might choose to go back to South, because I think South is a fantastic place. Well, my kid came here for Chinese Symphony, and we were blown away and thrilled with this school. So now, I'm thinking in high school, I recognize, my kids are older, so that's what I'm focused on. So I would limit the waivers. I would limit them to, look, if you've been in one school for a long time, keep your kid in school. But if you just moved here, nah, stay here, please, and work with this community. The other thing is, what Jennifer Passman mentioned, is we need to change the mentality and perception. This is a great school. This is a great community. Southside is wonderful. There's nothing wrong with it, but I think there's been this longstanding perception that it's not as good, or don't do this, blah, dah 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 dah. And that just perpetuates. I think if we can do this while I'm on board, as you vote for me, that we start championing saying, look, this community is excellent. It's not the perception that everyone has built over the years. So I think that's the first challenge to change.
Okay, we're going to start with our final question, and we're going to start with Joe. What final thoughts or information would you like to share with the board?
First, real quickly, I want to get to the politics out of the district. We're in shell, we're in a disadvantage, because we've got one candidate that's running solidly with the backing of a party that has elephant ears. Yeah, she's been funded. You have to keep politics out of the core of the primaries. My final thoughts, though, we know we have issues in the South Triad. They need to be corrected. We have a doctor, a superintendent, Dr. Crespo, that has some fantastic ideas, and I want to follow her lead. And now I'm going to say something in Spanish. Si puedes votar, su voto cuenta. Si no puedes votar, su voz cuenta. That means if you vote, your vote counts. If you can't vote, your voice counts. Thank you. I'm running for the South Triad representative for the Laramie-Stanley School District, and I'd like your vote. Well, I just want to thank Mason and the CTEA for hosting this event, and South High School for hosting this event. As I said, I'm a vice chairman of the past four years, and love this school, love the students here and the teachers, and hope for the best for this school and every school in this district. I commend everybody on this panel for their willingness to serve. In some ways, this is a thankless job. I can tell that I haven't done it for 10 years. There is always controversy, there are always challenges, but it's worth the effort. I run it because I have the experience, I have the knowledge, I have the love for students, for families. I'll be a voice for families, for students, and for teachers if I'm elected. And again, thank you for having us.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with what Joe said, that we need to keep politics out of the race and to remain non-political, because this is non-political. As a board, we have to work together. We have to ensure that all students have the same opportunity for a high-quality education. I believe all students should feel safe going to school physically and emotionally, and I believe all students should be treated with respect and dignity. So if elected, I would work hard to work with all of the other board members to ensure our diversity.
So I would just add that my main goal is to add the teacher voice and to add the student voice and add my experience as an educator to what I think is often missing in decisions are made in the school board. I think I have the experience in the classroom and in different areas within our community that can help add vital information to policies that are decided upon. I would tell you that I'm an educator, and I've said that numerous times, but it's because that's who I am, and it keeps me up at night, and I want the best education for everyone in our community. And maybe because I wasn't a very good student, I didn't like to read until I was much older. I struggled in my life, and I went to college on a scholarship, and that's how I paid for my college, and it was the community that helped get me that scholarship. And so I say that only to add that it's, I have a lot of empathy that I think I can bring to the board of other students who are going through. And I would like to thank you. Thank you for inviting me. My name is Maggie. Please vote for me. I'm a TV player. The idea of the board is to work with educators, to work with students, to work with parents, because we are our community. That's the goal. And that is what my platform is about. It's about equality, accessibility, and education. I believe in all of them. I believe in listening to voices, even those who don't vote for me, because the issues that are brought up before the board are really important to all of you. And that's the goal, is to listen to, filter between the entire board, and make a decision that benefits everyone. And that is my strength, and that is my goal. I really believe in education. I really believe everyone deserves a quality education, no matter where you're from, whether you struggle, or whether it's easy. So please, vote Maggie for the school board. Thank you very much.
I'm running on a Southsider for Life platform, and that is because that came from some years ago, and I was helping to build pride in the community of the South Triad, and made the design and distributed shirts to the kids of my daughter, one of my daughter's groups of friends and teens. It's important to me, because people need to know what it's like to be a Southsider. People need to know at the district level what we face every single day. I'm not sure of any other beautiful new school in the country where we would open it up and people run away from it. That's here in Cheyenne, and that's got to stop. And the thing is, we have the ability, we have the facilities, we have all of the things in place here in the South Triad. We need the students, we need the bodies. We have high-educated kids. We need to offer some vocational programs to them, and we need to be able to keep this Southside community building and have pride in it.
Would please get a round of applause for our candidate. Thank you again to everyone for joining us tonight, and to the loads of people who helped put this in all of our forums together this week. We're going to be posting the recordings from each of these forums on our Cheyenne Teachers' Education Association YouTube channel. If you check them out, please pop the links and share them with other voters in our community. Remember that every Laramie County voter will get to vote for two seats, one for the area position and one for the athletics position during the election, no matter. We thank you and applaud you for showing up, watching, and even voting for voters. Have a wonderful night.
Thanks.